Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for coming. My name is Matt, I'm Vice President at Sport here at SUSSU. So today we put on this kind of town hall style event to give students essentially a chance to ask late night venue owners and managers about student safety. So thanks everyone for coming, because I know it's in the middle of your day, so it really means a lot for us. Just a couple of things, we wanted to lay down a few kind of ground rules. So essentially we have very little time today, so we need to leave this place by quarter two. So therefore I'm going to ask that if people could not share personal experiences in particular venues, instead we intend to create a safe space for this after. And we're also happy to put you in contact with these venues, and I'm sure they'll be happy to speak to individuals themselves. There's also an email, you can email sussusafe@suusu.org and we'll help you put anyone in contact. This means that if I do cut you off, it's nothing personal, it's just because we're short of time. So if I could also ask that we stay respectful throughout the discussion, that'd be really good. Because essentially we're all here for the same thing, and we really want to see positive action on this. So I'd like to thank everyone for coming, and I'll give a chance for everyone to introduce themselves here. But I just wanted to say a special thank you to Yellow Door, Cashiers, Mimi, the local student DJ, university security, the police nighttime liaison officer, and Solent University as well who are here with us today. The organisers of Southampton Girls Night In are also in attendance but are wishing to remain anonymous. So just to let you know, this is being recorded, so without further ado, I'm going to go along the line. We're going to start with some pre-submitted questions, and then we'll open up to the floor. So if we start all the way down at the end, if you'd just like to introduce yourself, your venue, that'd be brilliant.
Hello, hi, I'm Becky from SOBAR, this is Neville, and this is Paris, and you would have probably seen us at SOBAR on the front door.
Hi, Adam, my name is Riley, we're representing Cafe Parfait today, this is my colleague Ollie. And again, you have probably seen us around town in the front door as well.
Yeah, I'm Chris, I'm from Jesters, and again, you've probably seen me on the front door quite a while.
I'm Richard, the General Manager of the Edge, and I'm always there when I live there.
Perfect, thanks guys. So the first kind of pre-submitted question we had was, what new measures will bars/pubs and clubs in Southampton put in place to reduce the number of drink spiking? We know there have already been measures in place, but some of them may have not been good enough, and people are still getting spiked. We need renewed commitment from all venues and an acknowledgement of failures in the past to protect their customers. Does anyone want to start?
I'll start. So most of you would have probably have seen a poster I put up about the things that we do do. Some of those, I realise, probably weren't as extensive enough. So the things that we are going to implement based on things that we have learnt this week, and obviously there'll be further things that we'll learn hopefully from this meeting, is in straight away, we've already re-implemented the Ask Angela scheme. So the poster's going to be up. Another thing is increased signage. So we realised obviously during the pandemic, a lot of stuff had started to slip, so our signage has started to slip. So you'll see a lot more Ask Angela stuff up, you'll see a lot more about not leaving drinks unattended, you'll see a lot more signage about who you can go to. We're going to start metal detecting every night. So we only were metal detecting during the summer, during the large events, which some of you probably won't have been to, but due to obviously the rising reports of needles being used, we are going to start metal detecting every night. We are in the process of ordering anti-spiking wristbands, some of them you would have seen. They've got the two dots on, which means that you can test two drinks. Unfortunately, we can't give these away, but we will be selling them at cost price. They cost eight pounds for eight, and they'll be a pound each, they'll be sold from the bar. We're going to increase bag search, we do bag search randomly, but we will be increasing that. We are also looking at something called Stop Tops, I don't know if you've seen them, but we are polycarb at SOBAR, clear polycarb cups, which helps with safety already. But these are stoppers that could go over the top, but we need to find something that works with our glasses. So we're going to order a trial pack of those and then start to use those if they work, if not, try and find something else. And increased removal of left drinks. We do remove drinks that are left, but we're going to try and up the removal of those. So that's the things that we're going to implement that we haven't already done.
Perfect, thanks. Do you want to go to Cafe Parfait?
So as my colleague mentioned, during the pandemic, the signage was increased about disinfecting, protecting yourself from the virus, and in general keeping yourself everywhere you're unsafe. So we will also be increasing signage throughout the building. We already do one metal searches, especially on weekend nights, but we will increase it during the student nights, because I feel like on student nights is when the younger generation doesn't feel safe to go and turn to a member of security or the member of the management team in situations when they don't feel safe. So we will make sure that we protect them as much as we can upon entry. We also will bring back the Ask Angela thing, we do have it at the moment as procedure in place. However, we will make sure that everybody are aware of it. Our staff, both security and bar, have already been trained on it. So even if now you just want to turn to any of our colleagues in and you just ask for Angela, they are trained how to react on it. The no drink unattended policy, I think this is something across the board that everybody are doing. We are planning to increase our floor staff throughout the whole week, on every single shift, to make sure this happens as soon as possible. And yeah, I think for now that covers it. Due to the increase of the spiking reports throughout the country, at the moment, a lot of anti-spike devices are out of stock. We have onsite anti-spiking cards, but they're not in the form of wristband, they're just cards which are provided in our medical room. So in case of a report of spiking, please keep the drink on you so we can test it into our medical room, our welfare room, which is provided in. And also we are looking into protective caps, which are going to be for the actual cups. It's going to have space for the straw, so we stop the potential dropping of pills or powder. There's not a lot of product on the market at the moment, so we are looking into doing something ourselves. And also we are working in a partnership with Radio Taxis at the moment, we have a partnership that we've been working for a while. So our venue is going to be market priority. So if this is not about spiking, it's just the general security of the customers, we will be able to call taxis for everybody who don't have a safe way to go and home. And possibly we're trying to arrange a discount at the moment for them as well, so everybody can have a safe way to go.
Perfect, thanks. Chris, did you want to add anything?
It's basically, obviously, we're all in the same boat, we're trying to do as much for you guys as we can, but ultimately, just about you guys being safe. So what I really want to know is like what your guys thought, what would make you guys feel a bit safer that we can implement? Obviously, because that's the end goal, is to get new customers being safe for venues. So I'd really like to open that up, if possible. We can do as much as we can from what we get told to do, but obviously, coming from you guys, I think that'd be more beneficial for all of us.
Yeah, absolutely, and we'll have a chance to do that after the pre-submitted questions.
Yeah, so we've actually already been working on increasing the things that we do at the Edge for a number of weeks now, because we recognised the increase in the reporting of spiking cases two or three weeks ago. So we've been looking into things like getting in protective covers for the top of glasses, and we've been researching into what's going to work best for our venue in that sense. We've got some trial things coming in at the moment that we're waiting for on deliveries, and then we plan to order quite a large substantial amount of those. We've had the bubble top anti-spiking plugs in our venue now for a few weeks as well. And also we received our testing wristbands, so that we can test any drinks that people think may be spiked at the time. So you know, if you think they happen to spike, we can test them there and then for you. We're also happy to replace absolutely any drink at all that you bring to us for any reason really. If you're not happy with the drink, we're more than happy to replace it straight away for you. I mean, there's a whole range of things that we've brought into place virtually immediately. And we began metal detecting on the door on Friday night, so we're trying to get really ahead of it, really, as much as we can.
That's perfect. So the next pre-submitted question was about the reporting of spiking. So how will you support students who have been spiked with the reporting process? So this person felt that they reported it to the police, but it had kind of been neglected. So as venues, is there anything in your capacity that you'll do to help? I don't know, who wants to start? Cafe Parfait?
So I feel like we as a venue are quite lucky, because so far, people have felt comfortable to come and tell us when they're worried about any report of spiking. In a lot of situations, we're also lucky about the fact that people don't actually drink the drink. They react, they're proactive, so they react before it actually becomes dangerous for their wellbeing. I feel like we need to work as a community, so it's a two-sided thing. We as a venue, obviously, we do our best, we have specifically our venue, we have a very high percentage female-to-male ratio. So because we have so many girls working on every single shift, whether it's a girl that does the report, it is, they usually feel comfortable to come and talk to us. However, the problem is in a lot of the cases, they don't keep the drinks, they keep them around, they just leave them somewhere around, and as it's left unattended, it has been disposed of. So we can't actually do the testing of it, which is something that we want to encourage people for us to actually make a statistic for how many of those cases, you know, it's just suspicious behaviour already, it has actually been spiked drink. But yeah, with us, we do a full investigation as soon as it happens. So our venue is covered by CCTV from every side. So we go for the CCTV, we always score the person that has been suspected out, we do body searches. And we, nine out of 10, we extract the person out unless the person who has done the claim actually says, oh, I think it was my mistake, and everybody are happy to remain to the venue. So so far, especially now with awareness being so high, so far we haven't actually had a real problem with people reporting it. However, our sociares are always open, and we have emails, and my colleague Ollie, who is the Event Support Manager, he has business cards which he gives away to customers if you want to report something that they're not feeling comfortable reporting at night.
I think we're very similar to Cafe Parfait in our approach. Like she said, we all have CCTV, we have to have CCTV in our venues, and we have to keep it for a minimum of 28 days by law. So it's really, really important that if it does happen, that you do report it, because we can look back and then we can check. The thing we have in SOBAR is that we pretty much employ mostly student staff behind the bar. So if you ever don't feel comfortable coming to talk to one of us three, because one of us three will always be there, one of our staff will talk to you and can come and speak to us anonymously if you don't feel comfortable reporting it.
Perfect. Any last one I want to add?
So reporting, yes. So we try to maintain a really close relationship with our customers. And while I'd like to think that most people feel comfortable coming to us, I think in reality, that's not always necessarily the case. I think what, in my opinion, what's become clearer is that maybe they're not being, these instances of spiking aren't necessarily always being reported to us when people feel they've happened. And I think that goes with the police as well, that they're getting things reported to them, that, sorry, the other way around. Like we get stuff reported to them that they might not necessarily be aware of. So for us, we're taking steps to keep a completely separate log for where people have come to us to report things. And we've been regulated with the police anyway, every four to six weeks, we have a private meeting with the police. So we're going to be bringing that information to them to make sure that they're aware. And hopefully, they'll be able to bring the same kind of information back to us where it's not been followed up by us. So hopefully, we're going to have a better sort of relationship with the police in that sense, so that we both have a clearer picture of what's actually going on.
Perfect, yeah. So the last kind of pre-submitted question we had was about, and I know it's already been touched on, but bag searches and pocket searches. So they referenced that Oceana used to have a metal detector. So is this saying that all of you will be like planning to bring in like metal detecting searches and random searches?
We can't fit a full metal detector like Oceana has, in Norway, we don't have the money to do that. But we do have metal ones, which like I said, we will be bringing out, we will be using. We used them during the summer when we had more high-profile events, but obviously now, with the current situation, they're needed. So we will be increasing bag searches, we will be increasing metal detecting searches and body searches. But like I've spoken to a few people about, unfortunately, if people want to get stuff in, they'll find a way to get it in. You know, if people are that depraved that that's what they want to do, they will find a way. So we'll do as much as we can, but we need you guys to report it as soon as it happens. Or obviously not instantly if you can't do it the next day. Because if you report it to all of us, and we can check our CCTV and we can work with the police, we will eventually find who is doing this. Or we may not, but we may put them off enough that they stop doing it.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I think the important thing is like you say, I spend a great deal of my time at the moment looking through CCTV to see if I can actually see anything to identify anyone who might be mishandling other people's drinks. So I think that's the key thing. Like if we're not aware of it, and the police aren't aware of it, then you know, it's hard for us to really sort of really circle in on the people that are doing these things. I agree that ultimately, if someone is that determined to bring these things into venues, they're going to find a way. But we are also, we'd like to say, we've already introduced a metal detector over the weekend anyway. So you know, that's something we're looking to do every day, we're going to certainly try to do it every day as much as we can, but yeah.
Perfect, yeah. And just finally, so with this increase in surveillance and door searches, we've had some concerns from members that it could lead to increased racial profiling. So I don't know, how would you prevent that as a venue?
Yeah, that is a difficult one to answer, because I don't feel that I racially profile, but perhaps I do, you know, like everybody, anybody to say, everybody has some type of bias, I suppose, and some type of prejudice. I don't feel we do so much at SOBAR, you know, we have a multi-racial team. I just think we'll keep doing what we're doing and search anyone not based on race, gender, anything else, but just the fact that we'll random search.
I actually haven't noticed racial profiling being increased recently, because we've had reports from both females and males, and our procedure is exactly the same, it doesn't really matter what gender or race they are. The procedure is always going to be the same to protect everyone else. Because the thing is, we need to find out if those are real claims or not, which was my point, where you need to keep the drinks so we can make sure, because we can ban and escort the person out, et cetera, et cetera. But if we can't prove it, he can go to another venue, and this can continue. So we do need to, as a community, to get our people going to people and just make sure that it solves.
I don't know that I agree with that necessarily, but then I suppose where our club is, we're situated in a predominantly non-white area, I would say. So that's something that's always kind of in the back of our heads to make sure that when these things are being reported, we try to investigate as much as we can there and then to see if there's actually any validity in the reports at the time. Obviously, we try to turn the concerns of everybody into account, but yeah, we're always very concerned of racial profiling because of where we're located, so we try to look into things as much as we can at the time to make sure that that's what's not happening.
Sorry, as much as we don't racially profile, we can't stop it if other people racially profile, you know.
Oh, that's certainly, no, I think, as venues though, I think, yeah.
We can only follow the reports we're given. If someone says something to us, we can't say, no, we don't believe you because that person this or that, the other. We just obviously have to take the reports we're given and work with them.
Perfect, yeah. So we're now going to open the floor. So Savannah and Ben will be walking around mic, so all you can shout out, so we'll start down here.
Female door team, just need more female, we need more female supervisors, door supervisors.
We need more secure, full stop.
Yeah.
There is, there's a massive, there's a massive shortage of door supervisors. There are some good ones, some bad, but it's a massive shortage, and we try to get the best we can.
But we've got to get more security because we have to protect the students.
Listen, I totally understand, no, 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 I know.
We agree 100%.
No, 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 I 100% agree with you, but trust me, we are trying to get the best we can. We're trying, we can do no more.
It's not necessarily get the best, it's just get more.
Yeah, but getting more is fine, but if you're getting more of the wrong kind of people, it's not fine. We'd love actually to have student security. Is there some way the university can put on like an SIA, SIA course for students? Because then you'd have your peers, they'd have their peers working in our venues, 100%.
It's a brilliant idea.
That'd be a great idea, you know, I agree, we need more females. I spend most of my time on the nights on the front door, because I want a female presence on the front door. And that's why I cut myself a pink high vis, because then I'd show out different from everybody else as well, because it is important.
Yeah, it's need to go to somewhere if they feel uncomfortable.
And girls do come to me, and I know these guys, if I'm not on the front door, will always grab me and bring me to the front door. If they have a situation where a female seems to feel uncomfortable, then I'll come and deal with it. A lot of my supervisors are female as well, because it's very important, I totally agree with you.
Can I just ask one more question quickly? What about a happy shopper, not necessarily somebody in uniform, not necessarily.
Like a mystery customer type.
Yeah, if you can't get SIA, we just put mystery shoppers in, just keep an eye.
I'm not so sure, are we allowed to do that?
You can have spotters, we have spotters that walk around.
Yeah, but not that.
You've got licence yet, are we allowed to do that?
Hi guys, so myself, Mark Ollie, and my colleague, Nick Sturges Lee Scott, we're from Police Licence in. We work very closely with these boys and girls up on the top table, and a lot more people as well. Just to answer the first question about the security, security is a national issue now after the pandemic. Before pandemic, everyone was earning £10, £15 an hour working the doors Friday, Saturday nights, Monday, John. Pandemic came in, shut all the pubs and clubs, all these boys and girls now work for Tesco's. They're getting £20 an hour working Monday, Friday night until five, they're off at weekends so they can see their family. Do they want to go back to working nighttime economy? No, simply correct. So I don't blame them for not doing it. The three big players in the city are trying to recruit actively, all the time. It's not just Southampton, it's a national issue. Give them time, we will get back to where they need to be or where we want to be. Yes, it'd be lovely to have a lot more female representatives, student representatives, anyone. They're really, really paying off against that. The second question's gone now, because I'm.
Can you lend me a towel?
Yeah, Mr Shop is a difficult, a difficult one. But we do do test purchasing. And everyone's aware, we do test purchasing, and we are very sneaky with it. We change our bits and bobs, so that we try, honestly, we are trying to catch them out week in, week out. It might not be the same venue, it might be a couple of years before we get round to Neville's doing it twice. But we are there, we are out there, and we are trying to do it. What we can only act upon is the information intelligence from yourselves telling us who we need to go and pick on. That's, I'm not going to, you know, if the squeaky wheel gets the oil, it's the same adage, it works, it really does. If you've got a problem, tell us about it, tell us enough about it, and as often as you can about it, and we will go and do something about it. And this is one of those things, I was going to mention, bear with me, it's a second minute, because I know I'm stealing your time. You said that you felt a bit left down, and actually, as a police officer, that quite upset me, because I'm not doing my job. I want you to be as safe as you can in the nighttime economy, and these guys will know. When I work the weekends, I'm out there till four, five o'clock in the morning. I want to go home happy, without being injured. I'm more than happy for you to have my contact details. So if you think, well, I'm not going to report to the police because they're not interested, I'll give you my details, I'll report it for you. I'd rather you not, because I want you to get the help there and then at the time. If you email me and I'm not in, it might be a couple of days, we might have lost that evidential window. But I'm more than happy to give you my bits and bobs.
The other thing I was going to add to what Mark was saying there, before the pandemic came along, just regards to student SIA, I was working with the university and looking at getting some members of the Christian Student Union to volunteer themselves to be streetbusters. I'm sure you've probably all seen the streetbusters out in front of us at the night. They're fantastic, they're going out until three, four, five in the morning, they help people get lifts home and all that sort of stuff. Help people if they're not too well on the floor, whatever, they've had too much to drink, and that sort of thing. The idea was opening up the streetbusters to appear at a sort of level, so that people, the same age of you guys going out, are there at the same sort of time as you're out to help you. I would, I don't know if that would be a beneficial thing for you to be able to approach people freely.
We, sorry, we used to sponsor the Christian Society pre-pandemic, and they were brilliant. They used to come down from the church at the top and come down, and that would be a really good idea again, because like you said, there are peers out there, you know, we're happy to help with that as well.
Like I was saying, we've got email addresses, we've got mobile phone numbers, job mobiles, so you can have it, I don't care. If you phone me, text me, we'll sort it out for you. We are that approachable, it doesn't matter. If we're not working, we won't get back to you, that's the whole point. If you need help there and then, phone the relevant numbers or make contact with the venues, and I'll get it sorted out. Fridays, Saturdays, there are police officers. We don't wear a uniform, because when we're out, what we're doing is we're looking at these guys and their procedures and what they're doing. So if we see people in venues that aren't looking too well, or things aren't going too well in venues, we'll be shouting at them, not necessarily at you guys or people having scraps or whatever. Our job is to manage and work with these guys. So as much as we work with these guys, we'll also get quite shouting with them if it's not going too well in their premises as well. So that's kind of what we do. We don't ever really work together, we cross over weekends, so we're generally on every weekend. So we're not particularly visible, Mark and I, but we are approachable. If you do need some help, give us a ring, give us an email. I've got a couple of cars, I can leave them with you guys, get the photo copied or email the details out.
Yeah, thanks a lot. Any other questions anywhere? Ben, do you want to, we'll go you, and then we'll go Sadwater.
First question, you all mentioned about welfare rooms. I've been at university for four years now, and I have no idea what those rooms are for all these clubs. So is there a way you can describe?
I didn't mention welfare room, I don't, we don't have a welfare room, I'll be honest, because we're an old building, we don't have the space. We have space upstairs, but we're not allowed, fire departments say, we're not allowed to take people out there because we don't have a separate fire risk, so we don't have a welfare room and currently don't really have anywhere to put one. We do take people outside and move them away from the venue and sit with them there, we don't have a welfare room.
We have a welfare room as a part of our venue, so have you been to Cafe Parfait before?
I have, but quite a while ago, so I'm in the last years.
When you go under, down the stairs, when you go to the toilets, there's a door there, it says first aid room on it. It's a fully equipped room, so in case of incidents, we put the people safely there. We have the minimum of three first aid trained people on every single shift, which is part of management, security, and staff. We always have, make sure that we have it from at least one department. And we give the medical help that we can, depending on obviously what the injury is or what the situation is. And after, we either contact, place paramedics, ambulances, we basically do our best on the night as soon as we know there has been, it's been happening to help out. But it is available for everyone, obviously you wouldn't know it unless you have had it inside the building. Because it's always a coded room, it's not accessible for the public, but we do that for you.
We have a welfare space as well, we have actually changed the signage over this past week to try and make it a little bit more clearer for people. But that's accessible through our clunk room area. However, I kind of have a bit of an adage, which is that you probably won't notice it there unless you actually need it. You know, you probably won't have noticed it if you have never really needed it before, but it is there. And you can approach any, any single member of our staff. We've been operating, for instance, the Ask Angela and the Ask Clive initiatives since they came out. So those are all posted everywhere, so you can approach any of our staff if you need to have that space, and you're certainly welcome to it.
A really quick second question, only one mentioned about helping people get home, taxis, which was perfect. I guess any personal stuff, but on Wednesday, someone was kicked out, and they said, oh, no one's going to leave on their own. No mates go home on their own, is it a switch? So what other measures are the other clubs going to do to get people home safe?
This is one I did want to talk about actually. We have a no home alone policy, which a lot of you have seen on the internet, as was absolutely torn apart. I feel like it needs a new name. So we try to not let anybody go home alone, but if you're of sound body and mind, I cannot stop you going home alone, I can't. Also, if you come out, we will assess if you're vulnerable or not. There have been plenty of vulnerable people that have come out at night where we have said, can we help you get home? And we've been told to do one in not so nice language. What we do do is we will sit you to the side, we will ask if you've got any friends, we will give you our phone to use if you need to. We will ask if you've got an Uber, we also help man the taxi route with jesters. At the end of the night, we'll help find you taxis. I've driven students home myself. I've delivered students to the door of actual halls, because I don't trust them to be able to get home alone. So we do all those things, but we'll continue to up the amount that we do do those things. Just in general, we do. You mean people who are armed and vulnerable, who are made to go home alone? No, 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 I just don't want to answer that, because there will be people that. So they would let them get the person inside, so sometimes, I can only speak from my experience, I can't speak for other clubs. In my experience, sometimes people will want to go back inside, but they're in a state, whether it be intoxicated or otherwise, but they're vulnerable. We can't let them back in the building, but we will always try and find friends. I've called people who have housemates at home to come and get them, basically, so that's what we do. We try not to let anybody who is vulnerable go home alone, but what I will say is we're only human. I will drop the ball and I will make mistakes, but we are trying to do better, we are. Otherwise, we wouldn't be here. The clubs that are here, we wouldn't be here if we didn't want to do better. We would not sit on this stage in a firing line if we did not want to do better.
So we're arranging a partnership at the moment, we're bringing a taxi where they're going to provide us with a tablet from which we're going to be calling cars for anybody who is leaving the building, regardless of what state they are. If they don't have a way to get home, our venue, what this is, what we're working on at the moment, our venue would be ideally market priority, so we will get a car into the street. Because the problem is with Uber, they don't actually stop in front of our building, because there is a zigzag. So it's a little bit down the road, when in those situations when it doesn't matter if it's a male or a female. I walk the customers personally, because as my colleague, I stay on the front door every single night. So I walk the customers personally down the street where it's at home, where the taxi is, because you never know what's going to happen around the corner, and at the end of the day, they are still our customers.
Yeah, I mean, we try our best to make sure that nobody leaves the venue alone. If we can, we try to locate their friends. Like I said, we try to keep a quite personal relationship with our customers. We're a predominantly regulars venue. I recognise obviously on a Wednesday, that's not necessarily the case for us, but we're predominantly regulars, so we know pretty much who most of our customers come in with, and we try to clock those that come in on their own and all that as well. own and all that as well. We, I think, I don't know if other venues are having the same issue, I've been noticing that we've been actually having issues getting taxis lately, there seems to be a shortage of drivers there as well. So that's been an issue for us. But, but yeah, we also ask our front door team that if they think somebody is particularly vulnerable, just to make a note of it, if they're refusing our help, so to make a note of it in our log so that if, if there is something that we need to look up, labour, you know, if something does happen and the police come to us, we're able to then look up what's happened there and if they did refuse help and all that sort of stuff as well. We have extensive CCTV coverage outside the front of our venue as well as inside of our venue, so we're able to, to see whether or not that's actually the case as well, you know, because I know a lot of people don't necessarily even trust security to make the right call, so we're able to look up on our CCTV to make sure that actually these are the things that, that we're asking them to do and they're actually doing those things as well.
Chris, you got anything else? Another question? Sad, do you want to pick someone?
I also, I have a question for the class, but also for Susu, the two second one. But a lot of your talk about your policies and your signs and stuff seem to refer a lot about the responsibility of the potential victim and not so much about the deterrent for the perpetrators. Your signs don't, you don't seem to include signs that, talk about the consequences of the actions, the, also the extent to, because you speak about spiking, but harassment comes in many forms in clubs, if people don't feel comfortable on the dance floor. There isn't much talk of intervening when, like observing customers, seeing if they feel uncomfortable intervening or making it, just, I know, loads of that stuff as well I think would deter rather than, it just seems like there's a, like, it doesn't seem like you have a no tolerance policy for the actual perpetrators, it just seems like a, like, you go to a club and you expect your friends to look out for you, I don't go to a club and expect the bouncers to be looking out. And yeah, and then I'll say it quickly as well for Susu, I think the safety bus is a missed opportunity. I think it's failing in the sense that a lot of people, it's not well advertised, people are actually afraid to get into it because they don't know what it is. It's barely, the sign on, it's not really clearly labelled. Also, people aren't aware of where the bus goes. There's a lot of misconception that the bus will pick up from clubs, which don't literally need any vans, it's just outside of a club, and tell anyone there a safety bus. There's no posting on the website of who drives the safety bus. I know, I've seen vans down the high street and just been assumed that that could be the safety bus. I think that's a big issue as well, that should be addressed by Susu.
Yeah, thanks. So I'm neutral today, but we've got the head of food and beverage at the back and I think he wants to say something about safety bus.
Hi everybody, so just about the safety bus, we have actually identified, we have identified what the safety bus is. So in Susu outside the stacks, in Susu outside the stacks, what we're actually going to be doing is actually producing a bus stop sign with safety bus on it. I know that Chris in marketing is actually looking at getting some magnetic signage which will be put on the side of the safety bus to actually highlight it as a Susu safety bus. The safety bus we've got is actually something we should shout about, we don't shout about it enough, and it's something we should be really proud of, so it's something that we do, we don't shout about it and we're going to make it better. I like the idea about registering and making sure that people know who the drivers are and again, that'd be something that'd be fed back, but thank you for your idea.
Perfect, so I don't know if anyone wants to pick up from the first point, just quickly, we're trying to get up any questions.
We have a zero tolerance policy on drugs, harassment, violence, I think all the clubs here probably have exactly the same thing. Anyone who has been too sober, and again, like I said, we're not perfect, there will be instances where we have missed it. If you report to us that you are being harassed, we instantly, and we can obviously see that, we instantly remove the person, you know, people, the same thing happened just a week ago. Neville removed someone from the building who was harassing someone. We also, obviously we'll always ask you if you feel uncomfortable, we've done that, but a lot of the time, people say they feel uncomfortable and we ask you and then you don't point out the person to us. That's not a slight on you guys because it can be quite a scary situation, but people need to try and be as brave as they can to tell us so that we can remove these people. The bus situation, it used to be brilliant, it used to come outside Aldi and it was fantastic and the guys who used to run it were brilliant and I'd like to see the safety bus come back a lot more.
Yeah, perfect. Another question? Ben, do you want to pick someone?
Yes, this is a follow-up point on the last one, but are any of your staff given bystander training? So looking at situations, seeing if someone's uncomfortable, even if it's something as simple as, oh, let me buy you a drink, I'm okay. No, 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 let me buy, that is a signifier that they could be the ones spiking or it could just be general like harassment and it can be very, very subtle, but bystander instruction and bystander training was given, I think in 2013 to members of the British Transport Police and various clubs among London, I think that was Everyday Sexism campaign, but it proved to be very effective. So are any of your staff members given bystander training? Would you be interested in actually doing so and taking it a lot more proactive, not just if something is reported, not just if it's like an obvious fight, but training your staff to look at the subtle warning signs of abuse, even if it's just to make note, to keep an eye on those people?
I think, I think that's an absolutely brilliant idea. At the moment, it's basically the pandemic, it almost destroyed hospitality as a business altogether. So about ninety percent, at least from my experience, about ninety percent of the staff are starting, they're starting from zero. So on one side, it's not great because they don't have the experience of going clubbing, especially because they're students, same, same as your venue, they don't have that much experience of going clubbing and noticing those things. However, it's also really good because you can teach them everything, everything from A to Z. They don't have, you know, they're eager to learn, they need to know those things. So part of my bar training, I do it, it's just an in-house training. Our security and management are fully trained because we have an in-house security team, so most of our security has been there five plus years, they've been there pre-pandemic and long, long, long before. And also, as part of our security team, we have one patrol, so this is a floater that goes through all of the floors, because we have three floors, including toilets downstairs, just four. And his main job is keeping an eye for antisocial or suspicious behaviour in any way. And he's the one that comes to me usually and he says, oh, I saw this guy giving drinks to like three different groups of girls and I go for CCTV then and obviously we extract him, do a body search and after I go for CCTV and I notice what it is. Luckily, recently what has happened, it has just been somebody very, very sharply tracked a child at girl. But luckily, we haven't had an actual issue with spiking percentage, but we do have a security person that does that on the back.
I think you've got to be very careful because you could approach somebody and it's completely innocent and then you do that and then they become enraged.
You've had that situation.
Yeah, that they've become enraged about what you've said.
It's a very, very fine line.
It's a fine line, we have to, you know, if we're going to do it, you have to be so careful, make sure that you're doing the right thing because you can say it to somebody, they're doing absolutely nothing, now you've got yourself an incident.
Obviously, we'd rather be safe than sorry, but sometimes we have to tread a very difficult line. Bars tend to, what we should be doing, six monthly training with our staff every six months, which we do, and within that training, we do do some type of active bystander training. We could do more, hundred percent, and it's something I've been looking at this week based on all the reports and things people have been telling me. So definitely, definitely, I will be looking more into it. Please know that we do have that and like I said, all our staff, our student staff, and they would always come and report to me when they think something's not right, but we could do more, hundred percent.
Perfect, yeah. Another question? Ben, do you want to pick someone from that side of the line? We're trying to get through these really quick, we've got about five minutes, so we just have short.
Basically, what my main concern, I'm a resident of a society and I've talked to a lot of the students, they're, like, we're all really concerned about the injection spiking, that's like the main thing for us, so I just want to hear more, like, I heard there's metal detectors and stuff, but what is it going to be, that everyone's going to be like scanned through, swabbed through pockets, is it everyone that's been checked or like, because until now, I don't think my bag's ever been checked and I'm in my fourth year of uni, like, and I've been to a few clubs, so I don't really know what, like, how can you guys make us feel confident that we'll be safe? Because we're hearing stories every day that people are getting jabbed up, like, it's a bit crazy.
I mean, we can only, we will try to do the best we can. We, we, you know, we, we will try to do the best we can, we will try to sort bags and we've got ones which we can use, but we can only do our best. And, and this, this spike thing is absolutely horrendous, we're down a shadow of the earth. And if we all work together, us, you, everybody, hopefully, we will really get it down and actually get rid of it.
So we are going to start metal detecting every night like we said, but a good point that Neville made, so we need, we all need to work together, call out your friends. If people know, people know the people who, not everybody, but people know people who are doing it, you see your friends, call out your friends. But we will, we will be upping bag searches, we will be upping metal detecting searches, but like my friend at the edge said as well, if people want to do it, they will do it, like, we will do, we will do our absolute best. Because as much as anything, like, obviously we don't want to see anybody hurt and customer safety is important, but if you're not feeling safe coming to our venues, don't come in our venues, if you don't come in our venues, our venue's shut, so we will be doing our best. And I know I can speak for everyone here, they will be, we will be trying our absolute hardest.
I actually think that answer that I have for this links with the first question that you had, because I feel like it's fifty fifty, so fifty percent of the process is going to be obviously keep the bag searches, upping the metal detectors, which trust me, all venues are going to do it, because the welfare of the customers is paramount for any of us. Because as we said, we've been closed for sixteen months, so we, we want to make sure everybody are happy, we want to make sure we do our best and recover basically from this whole pandemic thing. But the reason about the signage and everything is because we obviously monitor CCTV constantly, but you have hundred, two hundred, three hundred people, you can't monitor every single one in their hand, et cetera, et cetera. This is where the signage comes, where we encourage people to speak about it, even if it's not to you, even if you have just noticed someone doing it. We don't want to make the victims feel uncomfortable for any way, we just want to do it as a community for them to help, for everyone to help us work together to find it, because there's only, as my friend said, if somebody really wants to get it, then they probably will find a way to get it, in small needle way, even with a metal wound.
We'll try and get a couple more and we literally got two minutes, so we're making really quick.
If anybody wants to come and talk to me afterwards, if we don't get these questions in, I'll stick around, I'm happy to talk to anyone, anywhere, anytime.
Ben, have you got someone?
Hi, just to follow up from like that last point, I think a lot of you guys keep on saying you're going to up the bag searches. I think you guys don't realise, you never know who's going to be the person spiking someone, you need to bag search everyone. Oceana used to do it, I don't know why every single club isn't doing it, if that makes sense. So you guys, that, I just can't understand why you guys aren't bag searching everyone because then again, that would stop racial profiling, that would stop like any form of discrimination and prejudice too from like earlier discussions, is just do it to everyone, like, it will, yeah, like, that, that will actually stop drugs from getting into your clubs.
But most of the people that, I've been doing the job for forty years, which is a long, long time, and when people go, they don't bring them in their bags.
They don't bring them, drugs don't end up in bags, they end up in underpants, wet pants and shoes.
Trust me.
But, but it's a very, it's a very good point, like, maybe we should, sometimes we miss it because things are happening on the front doors, sometimes the queue's horrendous, it's pouring down rain, not that that should be a reason to be lax with security, absolutely not, but it happens. A lot of us search bags, not just looking for drugs and needles or anything else, because we don't want people to bring alcohol in, if I'm on S G notes, anything.
It is a form of spiking if you bring alcohol.
Of course, yeah, because if you put so much drink, so all I can say is we'll try and do better.
I feel like Oceana were really lucky with the fact that they have their own buildings, their queues going all around, so they can, they can afford to have two, three hundred people on a queue and search every single one of them. With us, when we're on public roads in the city centre, yeah, we can't block certain areas as well. You know better about Oceana.
Yeah, so I used to work at Oceana or Parfe and you can't think of it, but the space that they had allowed them to do the stuff that we want to do. I've, yeah, I've got my voice yet, so lucky you lot, but this whole thing's a process, you know, it's been in the media at the minute, it's heightened everyone's awareness, which is great, that should produce it naturally. We've got to take steps, we're not just four venues who are trying to one up each other, we work together, we constantly communicate and to find a solution that would help universally and doing stuff like this, I think it's really important, hearing your ideas, which has given me some good stuff that we can report back and certainly implement. And I can't stress the importance of community because I'm, no offence guys, clearly the